Greetings, greetings, greetings. I am Nicole Everett, the host of Conversations with Nicole, a talk show based here in Tallahassee, Florida, focused on connecting the community through conversations. And today I am having a virtual meet and greet with City Commissioner Dr. Elaine Bryant. So this is a great opportunity for my viewers to meet Elaine, get to know her, ask questions. So hopefully you all will be engaging like you normally are and ask her plenty of great questions. And we have a couple of special guests that will be joining us. So be sure to tune in and hear what they have to say as well. So without further delay, welcome Dr. Elaine Bryant. Look, I have to have my own cheering section, right? My own applause. Welcome, welcome, welcome.
Hello, y'all. So glad to be with you today.
Yes, yes.
Conversations with you. I'm going to really kind of kick this off by telling your audience, your listening audience, a little bit about who I am. I am serving currently as your city commissioner in seat one, also running to maintain that seat in this upcoming election. So I'm going to start this off by requesting and asking all of you to actually go out on August 18th and cast your vote for me. And I'll probably end it with the same statement. But in between that, you'll learn a little bit more about who I am. So I'm really, I'm from Ocala, Florida. I have been in Tallahassee for over 40 years. I am a proud graduate of Florida A&amp;M University. Absolutely. And I actually received my doctorate in educational leadership from FAMU. And I like to always start there really, because that's just, FAMU is such a place maker in this community, as are all the universities and the colleges. But I guess I do have a little bias toward my alma mater. That's my education piece. But I've been working in this community for my entire time here in Tallahassee. So give you a little bit, if you want to hear a little bit about that.
Yeah, so what made you come to FAMU?
Oh, man. Well, I have a brother. My oldest brother was in the Marching 100. And we got to come up, you know, little sister coming to see big brother in the band. Of course, he tried to get me back to the hotel to be still, but knowing me, I was probably in the mix. But I really, really did enjoy those days. And a sister who graduated from FAMU in pharmacy. So our family legacy, except for one renegade brother, actually graduated from Florida A&amp;M University. So that's what brought me here. And I certainly know in retrospect, that was probably one of the greatest decisions I made, was to actually come to FAMU.
I understand and I concur. Same thing for me.
Awesome.
Yes. So tell the folks what you do.
All right, so every day, I ought to back into this really, Nicole, because I actually started my career as a school psychologist here in Leon County.
Okay.
In fact, I think I was probably the first African American female to be a school psychologist in Leon County. And I guess the only thing that actually caused me to leave that area was that, and I really, this is not a good reason, I'm going to say this upfront, to leave a job, okay? But I looked at the top of the pay scale, and it was beneath the beginning salary for state employees.
Oh.
So I was like, you know, maybe, maybe I should go a different route. So I actually left, but I did enjoy the work immensely, working with kids. And many of them were gifted, just challenging them to be their best. And kids who had learning disabilities, challenging them to know that they too could succeed. So that was very rewarding. But I didn't leave there and go to the Florida Department of Law Enforcement. In a time when FDLE had, I don't think any African Americans is a part of their leadership team. So I was able to work my way up the ranks, starting out as a research and training person and ending up being their first female director at FDLA. And that was an awesome experience, because it was a training ground for, especially during the, that timeframe of being heard, learning how to be heard.
What timeframe was that?
Well, that was in the eighties.
Okay.
And there were, for a female to sit at a table with primarily males and be heard. I tell this story often during my training, that many times you can have great ideas, you can speak your idea, but you're not heard.
Right.
So, and many people face that even today. They have challenges they want to talk about, and they stand and they talk. But in reality, the end result is that they're not heard. Because the end result is that nothing happens. So from there, I really always wanted to own my own business, getting into what I do today. And even while I was at FDLA, I actually opened my business. A management training consulting firm. And I've been doing that for close to 30 years, probably.
Wow.
And that is extremely rewarding, because today, as I go into various workplaces, I no longer train for the opportunity to receive remuneration. I actually train to see people's lives change. I want them to be able to apply principles and not just learn principles, or be able to regurgitate principles. So going into the workforce and helping people know that where you are does not have to mean that this is your last stop. That you can actually be and dream and go wherever you want to go.
Wow.
And that for me now is extremely rewarding. So I currently actually do a lot of strategic planning.
Okay.
And I do a lot of the leadership training. Leadership is definitely my area of expertise. So from there, I actually went to the Department of Juvenile Justice. And I just mentioned that, because my whole criminal justice background brings me into why it's so important in 2020 to connect the dots between people who live in neighborhoods where kids are not being their very best, not doing their very best, and end up in our criminal justice system. Which is always a challenge, because they have such potential. It's just a matter of how do we engage in that conversation that brings them from what they see as barriers and make them stepping stones? So, and yes, I do serve as your city commissioner. I will get to that.
Yes, that's all good stuff. Look, I'm learning. This is, this is good.
I was challenged really, always, I wanted to serve at that level. And I often told my friends that, you know, I would love to serve on the city commission. And they were always saying, well, you know, you may get that opportunity, you may get. And so the time came and they encouraged me to put my name in. And I'm like, well, if it's something I'm supposed to do, it will happen. I often talk about not being political, so to speak. But my heart is in reaching out to people and helping to change lives. So I put my name in the hat. And out of those 96 or 100 people, I was selected, appointed to the position. So here I am, about 18 months later, and I'm running for the position. So I just want to continue to work and serve the community, because that was the question I was asked when I was appointed. Well, tell me, why did you want to do this? And my answer was the same then as it is today, is to serve the citizens in the city of Tallahassee. That's a thumbnail sketch, but I'm open to answering any question.
All right, well, that's good. So for those of you who are just joining us, I am Nicole Everett. This is Dr. Elaine Bryant, your city commissioner, seat one. This is a virtual meet and greet. So we have some folks that are on here giving greetings, saying hello. Hey, fellow at CityWalk, we love you, Dr. Bryant.
Love you too.
Real saying hello. So thank you all for being on. But we want you, this is again, virtual. So we want you to put your comments in, because that's how we're going to know that you're here and that's the way we're going to engage with you. So Elaine, I want to know, like, from the time that you were appointed to now, what's this experience been like?
Wow, that's such an awesome question.
Right? So let me just, before you respond, I see you in the community. I mean, you know, I'm out here at events and you're, you know, I see you for like, a quick moment and you're off to the next event. And then I may see you at a couple of events in one evening. And it's like, you got your running shoes on, ma'am.
Look, that's how I live now. From one event to the next event. Because it's so important to get to events where our citizens come together for dedicated causes. So yeah, you're right. I can be in three or four events in one evening. But I think that's, that's the life of a city commissioner. That this, this job I was told when I started was a part-time job. And I was like, okay, well, I'll be able to continue my full-time job that I had and do this one. Well, that, that didn't last long. So I had to leave my full-time job and dedicate myself to this job, which is what I did and what I'm doing right now. And it's non-stop, because the issues in our city continue to exist. In fact, they've existed all along. But now we're paying special attention to certain parts of our neighborhood, neighborhoods that need assistance. And I have to be honest, I am committed really to ensuring that there is positive change.
Okay. So let's jump into the issues. What are, what are three of the main issues that you're passionate about and want to address? Not that you haven't addressed them already, but you know, really want to address once re-elected?
Well, I want to continue to address this. A number one issue of mine is economic development or economic vitality. It's one thing to develop, but it's something else to have vitality and have life. But especially, well, really, all across the city of Tallahassee, economic development is critical to the success of our city. If we have no money that can be invested in our community, the end result is that you continue to look the same. You continue to be the same. Because even when you dream, you don't have a mechanism to turn the dream into a reality. So economic development and vitality kind of leads, leads the list. When we look at the challenges that we have in Tallahassee, whether it's homelessness, it could be, and I don't want to call it economic deprivation, but incentivizing businesses to want to come to Tallahassee, getting students who graduate to want to stay in Tallahassee. We have to have competitive jobs. We have to have training in areas where everyone is not going to college. They don't want to go. And they want to be a part of the community. And we have to have some trades. And we do in Tallahassee. But there's a gap between the availability of the trade and the desire to go and be a part of it as a student. That brings us obviously to various educational challenges that, all of these things, when you start to think about it, are in some way undergirded by financial support, economic empowerment.
Yes.
So that's, that's still number one. And as a business owner, businesses in Tallahassee, they have to, they, we have to be able to be financially stable. That means you have to bring your services, your products, whatever it is, to the table. And have a market that can receive it, such that you too can flourish. So that's, that's kind of inclusive of many things. And as you well know, the healthcare disparities in our city are also a challenge. And it comes back to how we prioritize healthcare in minority communities especially, many of whom have no doctor. They may not have food. We have food deserts in our, in our city. All of these things are interrelated. But they come back to, do we have the financial stability foundation in order to do what we need to do? So that's one thing.
Okay.
Then secondly, my, my heart's desire is to have neighborhood engagement. Now, I think for many years, people who had the, a good heart about wanting to provide things for neighborhoods actually may have poured some money, some money into the neighborhood and say, and suggest that whatever that was should be sufficient for whatever it is we told you you needed. The key to me for neighborhood engagement is hearing from the neighborhood. Not assuming that we know what people want.
Right.
We have to learn how to go and listen, sit down with neighborhood partners, hear their heart, hear their challenges, their problems, and then come back to the table to talk about, how do we distribute funding to support end results that have been identified by the neighborhood? So that would be number two. And I don't know if you remember, but we, last year, we actually took our commission meetings out into the neighborhood. And that's the first time I think that has happened. But it is so critical that we don't sit in city hall all the time, but that we go to the people, which this commission actually did. We went out so that they'd have to walk for, from their homes to get to the commission meeting.
I like that idea. I like that you all did that. There were a few initiatives that were started by, well, this one in particular, that was started by Commissioner Steve Mizeberg, which was the Renaissance Partnership Initiative. And it selected certain neighborhoods. I believe Appalachia Ridge was the first one. And the Providence Neighborhood was the second one. And those, that, that initiative in particular, I was involved in it, because at the time I was at the lenders consortium, but really sought to hear from the residents of those neighborhoods, as well as the stakeholders in those neighborhoods and all the other partners that could help make those neighborhoods successful. So, you know, I like hearing that. That, that's what I'm getting, that, that puts me in the mindset of that program, because it was so, I think, critical to, you know, taking those neighborhoods or getting them some of the resources that they needed to be, you know, more successful, so.
Yeah, and that really brings me into the third priority, because it also directly links to, to the neighborhood engagement. And that is developing the plan. Neighborhoods have a plan that they, when you talk about the Renaissance Plan, I think that was, I think, back in 2002 or somewhere in that neighborhood, I think they told me. And that plan has obviously to be refreshed, because things certainly on the landscape today don't really look like 2002. But this whole planning process is so critical, not only in neighborhoods, but for the city itself. We developed the strategic plan in that first year. And that is my background. So I was pretty instrumental in ensuring that, as a city, we had a strategic plan that helped us to plan into the future. And we had five or six priorities that we actually said we would focus on. And that's what we've been doing, because there are many things to be done. But you really have to focus in so that, number one, we can actually develop goals, we can develop strategies and tactics. And most importantly, we can understand when we have come face-to-face with success and when we have not. And the accountability measure of who are we holding accountable to ensure that these things get done? So we developed five areas. And I think it was five, it might have been six, but five at least, that from the quality of life to economic development. We're looking at making sure that our organization itself is productive and effective. Public safety, which is also tied directly to me, to the plan that we developed, that has to be in many ways reshaped as we move into this next year. So the other thing about strategic planning is that it's not a concrete document. It has to be nimble. It has to be put together in such a way that we can change it. So perfect example is COVID-19, as I'm sure you're aware. So when we developed the plan, there was no such thing, at least to our knowledge.
Right.
I'm not sure it didn't exist, but to our knowledge, there was no such thing. But that is today, very much impacting the resources that have been set aside maybe to do some other things. But we had to address the issue of the day, which was COVID-19. And, and we've done a lot as a city in that area. So herein lies my, my three things that today, I would say are my primary focus. And probably, if you ask me the same question next year, this time, I don't know if I'll be telling you it's the same, but it's a high probability. Economic development, neighborhood engagement, and the implementation of our plan.
Okay, wonderful, sounds good. So I have been involved in some community discussions around racial equity. So with the, the death of George Floyd, which has kind of just set off, set off the systemic racism and bias prejudice discrimination in our culture towards Black and Brown people. You know, there's been a lot of protests and uprising if you, as it relates to that. One of the things that I would like to see, as well as others, I believe, is some type of addressing of racial equity in all areas, in all systems. So government, business, healthcare, education. And just wanted to get your thoughts on that.
I'm so glad you said all systems. Because many times we think that the inequities, racism, prejudices are funnel solely into law enforcement. But I would suggest very strongly that it's across all systems, irrespective of any one particular system. I am often reminded, Nicole, that when I was growing up, that we talked a lot about racism injustices. I can remember protesting and doing all kinds of things. And then here we are in 2020. And I'm seeing the same thing I saw back when I was in high school. Thinking to myself, what has happened between then and now? Or what did not happen between then and now that has helped, would help to change our culture? And I know it takes time to actually reshape cultures and change them in a very systematic way. But unfortunately, I'm seeing some of the same things. I'm still seeing today that funds are not allocated in low-income areas in cities. That was happening then, it's happening now. I'm still seeing prejudices such that you pre-jerically based on the color of my skin without knowing me. I'm still seeing that today. I'm still seeing today that many people probably won't be able to go and get a loan from a bank, irrespective, in many cases, of their financial health. Not because I don't qualify, okay? I'm still seeing some of the same institutions of racism today that I saw years ago. What is very interesting is that there was a study done through the Greater Tallahassee Chamber that identified the two Tallahasleys. And even when I saw that, and I said to myself, but what is going to help shift the paradigm? What is going to help actually implement strategic changes such that we could become one Tallahassee? And I think a lot of, it's going to be, it's going to not happen overnight, but it will not happen at all if we don't do it with intention.
Exactly.
Coming up.
Yeah, that was going to be part of my comment, just that, you know, to the extent that the commission has taken this issue up specifically, especially as it relates to the city's policies, governmental policies, there has to be some intentionality related to this. So I just, again, want to encourage the, the commission and leadership to really take that to heart and do what they can to implement some racial equity across the board.
Yeah, herein lies the reason. We really have to look at the policies and procedures. Because they may not only be outdated, but they may support the very racist acts that we see through our filter that may not have been seen before.
Absolutely.
Many times people are following the policy, but the policy is a little out of whack to be nice. So I think we, and that's something over which we have control. You know, some things you don't have control over, but some things you do. And I believe you start where you have, right in that space where you have some control. So that's what we've been doing. And that's my commitment to continue to do it.
Wonderful, wonderful. Well, we have a guest that is waiting backstage. So we are going to invite Ms. Community Chick, Kristy Henry, to join us. Welcome, Kristy.
Hi, Kristy. My mic is muted. Hey, y'all, good evening.
Kristy, for those who don't know you, I don't know where they've been. Maybe they've been hiding under a rock. But just tell them where you're from, what you do, and why you support Elaine Bryant.
Well, hey, y'all, my name is Kristy Henry. I have for 17 years, well, let me go back. I came to Tallahassee as a student at Florida State University intentionally. Hey, to the hill. I went to the set on Wednesdays and enjoyed it. But the rest of my time I spent at Florida State. And then, and then I was able to work as a student here with AmeriCorps, with Leon County Schools, back when whole organizations hired AmeriCorps teams to do specific projects and initiatives within a certain area. And my area was South Side Tallahassee. And so I have a great, 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 great love for South Side Tallahassee, if nobody knows that. And so my last, I married South Side Tallahassee. My husband is from, his family is from South Side Tallahassee. And we have together for the last 17 years, owned and operated an independent real estate brokerage, called Kingdom First Realty, where I'm the president and managing broker. I also have gotten to know the community in depth through service on the neighborhood level with Kona. I came in in 2007, working with the Board of Directors on programs and initiatives to diversify the club under the leadership of then-president Stephen Hogg.
Tell them what Kona is.
And Kona is the Council of Neighborhood Associations of Tallahassee, Leon County. Great organization, has been a neighborhood advocate. Great organization, has been a neighborhood advocacy advocacy voice in Tallahassee, Leon County since nineteen eighty-one. Um will be celebrating forty years in twenty twenty-one as a local organization of advocacy for neighborhood consensus and community and and uh government involvement. Um have done a great deal of policy work through that arm. Um but I really got to know the two sides of Tallahassee through Kona. Um where you saw great neighborhoods on one side of town that had access to all of the names and and all of the information. And quite frankly, all of the resources. And then I didn't see any Southside really neighborhoods that were involved in Kona, and I asked why. And so um I got two answers. The first one was that, you know, they weren't organized, there wasn't a lot of organized neighborhoods active at that time. Um and then second, you know, the the governance of Kona and the the austere reputation of Kona can be intimidating for. Um groups that are just up and starting and trying to um create and build capacity for leadership within their neighborhoods. So I worked to try to break down many of those barriers. And I'm very proud of the work me and that Board of Directors teams did with trying to increase um diversity within Kona. So I'm here to support Ms. Doctor Commissioner Assistant Deaconess, I think, Mel Elaine Bryant. I'm here to support Elaine Bryant for two reasons. The first reason is because I I didn't know her from Adam Paint before she got. Sat down as a commissioner for the Tallahassee City Commission. That, first of all, it's not because she was detached, it's because she's the type of person that does her stuff in the background. She doesn't seek limelight, she doesn't sink, seek, she doesn't seek power, she seeks to empower. And many times she is empowered from the back others before her with her gifts and her talents.
Hold on, Elaine, did you hear that? That, I'm sorry, that's that's tweetable right there. She doesn't seek power, she seeks to empower. I love that, I'm sorry, go ahead.
And 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 that's what you find in these Tallahassee people that are dynamic, but don't know what to know who they are. They work in the background and and they don't have a problem being in the background until somebody pushes them to the forefront. And so based upon my getting, my intentionality and getting to know her, first of all, she crazy. I really enjoy sitting with, sitting with her. At a recent banquet where I was invited by Anita Faber.
A meeting or listening, oh my gosh. I have committed to not sit, sit next to Elaine in any meeting because she's crazy.
Elaine will get you in trouble, Elaine. Commissioner Bryant will get you in trouble.
Don't do it, don't do it.
Y'all, Commissioner Bryant is is is, she look all austere and real diplomatic and very uh, you know, dignified, but she she is a nut. And I'm telling you, she will get you in trouble. Um which, you know, she has the wrong person because I don't mind trouble. But um you know, I I I have recognized her heart because it's it's the same heart as myself, myself Nicole. We we work this community work and we will work under people, right? We will work under people until it's in, it it it's incumbent upon us that we must step up. And that's what Dr. Bryant did, she stepped up in a time that Tallahassee needed somebody to step up. We had the worst dark cloud, I wrote an article about it in the in a Democrat, how dark that cloud was. And I don't think people who aren't in community work could really feel how palpable the cloud was. It influenced everything, it influenced relationships on the city, county, community level. There there was just this whole like lag in terms of confidence and integrity. And so Dr. Bryant stepped in in a time of 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 what we would call an integrity deficit. And by her actions, she's, first of all, been thrown into the fire. Thrown into, thrown into this position, thrown into dealing with peoples instead of dealing with one agenda. She's dealing with multiple people with multiple agendas, right? And so there's there's dealing with that, but there's also kind of understanding the soul of of all of Tallahassee, right? And um it it's it's phenomenal how you have stood in the midst of that. And I've watched, I've watched you do that. And I remember when you first uh when you were first sworn in, you said, why don't I know you? And I said. Right, but when we're working, we're working in our space and we're happy working in our space, making a difference in our space. But I have just so enjoyed, first of all, getting to know somebody that listens and knowing somebody that comes with a plan or that can listen to your plan. And say, no, you ain't thought it is. You need to think, you need to think it is, have you, have you, have you um, you know, interjected this, that, you know, I like that. And so I think we have a visionary, seasoned, calm, tenured person in the position. And I believe we need to keep her. And that is why I am supporting Dr. Commissioner Assistant Elaine Bryant.
Well, thank you. For that other part. You know it's true.
You know Kristi going.
Oh yeah.
Alright, so Kristi, um are there any city initiatives that have rolled out since Elaine has been on the commission? That you have been a supporter of or that you, you know, have seen her be, get involved in that you want to mention?
Absolutely, and and first of all, zero to sixty, right? So let's, let's, let's not, let's look at this in context. When you go from nothing to a lot of something, that that that's first of all, you know, extremely phenomenal. But I think the second thing is that, as a neighborhood advocate, first of all, advocacy is what it does. It's not like this sexy tongue, you're just an advocate because you run in your mouth. If you're not doing anything, you're not an advocate. So when you get, when you get advocates in office, they look at it from the, from the purview of outcomes and action and actually implementation. And what Elaine has done along with her city commission partners are several things. The first thing is moving forward the agenda of the bond community in in regards to supporting. And and I don't know if people understand that Elaine also serves as a CRA board member. So funding that goes through the CRA goes through her vote and consensus vote of her board. And so they have been extremely supportive in ensuring that neighborhoods like Bond. Um who has never gotten any investment of this magnitude ever. So people look at a six million dollar investment, that's six million dollars over like seventy years of the neighborhood surviving, right? So you know, that's nothing. I I so, thank you city, thank you CRA board, but that's really a drop in the bucket. That's about maybe a tenth of or or you know, of what's supposed, what's what needs to happen over there. But they have continued as a board, as commission representatives on that board, to fund and to undergo. And to ensure that that money speaks to what the consensus of the neighborhood has derived that it needs to be poured into. So whereas we might want to put it in infrastructure cost for road improvements that improves the visible or the built environment look of the area to make it more attractive investors. Well, the neighborhood is saying, no, we need facade grants for our homes to be impacted by this money. So folks like Elaine are on the board making sure that that funding goes to the place of impact, which is on the microeconomic level or the neighbor level. She also has worked alongside with the commission um in in a, in an initiative that's very dear to my heart, which is the South City Foundation. This foundation is a quarterback organization that serves to undergo the capacity building and the revitalization efforts within the South City neighborhood. South City is another neighborhood, no money, ever. Now, there have been, now let me pre- preempt that, there have been some infrastructure improvements as a reg- as a result of advocacy efforts. By various groups within the South City um community as a result of several plans that have come out, the ULI study back in twenty fifteen. And some other implements based upon health. So let me preempt that, but it takes commission action to say, you know what? We need to support the long-term functionality of this group and we need to work alongside them to make sure that they realize. Um and implement and are successful in the community-driven resident-informed revitalization of this neighborhood. So Dr. Bryant has worked, not only has she worked alongside it on the commission level, she comes out in the heat to our summer break spot. And she, you know, she judges hula hoop competitions, you know, she she helps hands out slushies. You know, she's real grassroots, hands-on with this stuff, right? It's but and 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 these seem like minimal things, but they are uber important when it comes to building trust and building connection on the community level. Um she also um as of late, again, commission action with the CRA board has funded um economic vitality efforts. Within not just Southside, but also Frenchtown. Last year she was on that commission that gave money to that citizen group that actually implemented Frenchtown Rising. And and people don't give you credit for what's credits due, but she was on that board that made the decision for that money, that made that investment in the cultural. Um in the cultural vitality, if you will, and cultural empowerment of the residents to bring something of value to their community. She continues to meet with different neighborhoods on the neighborhood level to talk through what they want to see in their neighborhood, not what the city want to see, not what other organizations. What 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 do the residents want? And how can we build powerful collaborations to realize um those efforts on the community level? So it, you know, that, you want me to keep on or you want me to? Okay, okay, I I, because I, you know, I I'm on a roll here.
I see, thank you, but we got a lot of guests and we run out of time, so thank you. Speaking of neighborhoods, we have the Greater Bond Neighborhood Association President, Ms. Talithia Ed was here to also. Uh tell us a little bit about her and why she is supporting Dr. Elaine Bryant, so welcome Talithia.
Hey y'all, oh, this Kristi thing, but how y'all doing? Kristi, it runs off, right? Hey, it's alright. I know, that's right. Hello, it's so great to be here, um why I'm supporting Dr. Bryant? Because I love her, no, really, she is proven, I I I'm I'm gonna tell a quick story and coming back around to it. I remember um when we were all sitting there and waiting to find out who would take the next seat. Um take that seat for a city commission. And I remember I seeing her tall and walking up to sit at her seat and I was wondering like, who this, who is this lady? You know, I didn't know who she was. And what I was so impressed by after that is Dr. Bryant began to reach out to community leaders. To find out what was going on, what we were working on, what we wanted, what we wanted to see, how could she support? And that meant a lot, right? Because you hear people say, well, she was appointed to the seat, she didn't get elected. But you don't have to be elected to actually get things done. And I heard Kristi give the laundry list of the things that Commissioner Bryant came in and saw as important. Because she's lived in this community, worked and served in this community over thirty years, so she knew what the needs were, right? But she was, she needed to learn and get in and say, let me ask you who boots on the ground. How do I, as I make the policies and make the decisions, how do I help support the work that you all are already doing? And so um as I began to get to know Commissioner Bryant and and her work. And I really admired her, I'm a, I always call it a a firm kind of silence. Where she doesn't speak and say anything unless it is poignant. And it's gonna move things, system, policies, that is what she does. And when she speak, when she says something, we know that it's gonna be something that is gonna be beneficial to the community. And so getting to know her in that way was one thing. But having the commitment from the CRA and the commission when Bond was awarded the six point four million dollars. Was overwhelming. But it wasn't just awarding, that's a a vote, I I, you know, getting that. But it's actually walking it through and supporting and coming back and asking, coming back and asking, how is this working? How do we get, how do we make it better? What do we do? Is is it enough money? No, it's not enough money, you said it already. So you know, we always coming back, Commissioner Bryant. But out, even outside of her role, watching her serve in this community was what moves her heart, right? And being a mentor, people don't get to see that part because they're watching the city commission. But mentoring us young leaders and people who have projects and things that they're working on, no one gets to see that piece. I've been blessed to to watch her in those roles and to help, she has a strategic planning background, right? To to watch individuals um and help individuals do things and and make it happen. You talked about the Frenchtown Rising, we talked about, if you were to survey, many people with their nonprofits and their projects that they come with. Dr. Bryant is helping individuals understand how to move this community forward by having things be in line. And so I I'm supporting her based on all the things Kristi said policy-wise, but person. I believe in the person-to-person relationship, I believe in um actually knowing the heart of who represents you. Who who's gonna serve and speak and make policy for you. And I'm pro- I'm proud to have gotten to know her. I'm proud to, he, like I said, when I hear her speak, I know that she's gonna say something that, one, she truly believes. Two, that is, it makes sense, you know, that it's gonna be forward-thinking. And three, that is gonna be beneficial for this entire community. And so I I'm I'm excited to support her and I look forward to August eighteenth being the date that is all.
Okay, very good. So Dr. Bryant, you got a a lot of support here, so. Any words you want to give us?
I'm not a speaker, but these two ladies, these two ladies that that are with me today, both have such potential. Now, I'm I'm much older than they are, uh but let me tell you. You talk about on the horizon of making a substantial uh difference in this community. Uh look, we're looking at two leaders right now who one day will sit hopefully in the seat that I will sit in. Uh and make informed decisions that will move our community forward. They're probably looking at me like, uh uh.
They try not to look.
Yeah, yeah.
They they try not to look.
But on a serious note, uh whether they they are sitting in that seat or another seat. The bottom line is that uh and and because of my heart to actually mentor and help develop. And help young people dream about where they want to be. Uh and know within themselves that, yes, I can go there, I can be that, I can do that. Uh they're already doing it, I'm really proud of them. Uh I I give them both their peony, you know, laid on. Nah, I am extremely humbled by their comments, I really am. Uh because they have kind of read me from, uh I was listening intently really to the things they were saying. And and they really have uh kind of searched my heart uh to know and see in me the things that I'm trying to do in this community. So I'm I'm extremely thankful to them, but I'm extremely proud of them, uh for who they are and what they mean to this community.
Awesome, so I understand you have a Queens Initiative, you want to share more about that?
Yes, and I'm so excited about it. I want everyone on on their calendar today, tonight, while you're listening to me. Uh to plug in the date, eight, eight, it's August eighth. Eight forty-six AM. Uh we're actually going to get to the courthouse. And for those who have yet to actually cast their ballot, their early ballot, they'll be able to do that. Um and if you have already cast your ballot, you can come join us in that parade. Uh to actually say, women are queens who count, who vote.
Okay, tell me that time again.
Eight forty-six. I wonder if you catch that significance.
Okay.
We we need to know that people all, not not just um Mr. Floyd, but from a historical perspective, across time. People have given their lives that we might have the opportunity to go vote. Uh and and my challenge is let's not waste one ounce of our opportunity to go cast our vote. Now, of course, I want you to cast a vote for me, but please don't miss the opportunity to go and vote.
Alright, so that's the Queens Initiative, August eighth, twenty twenty, Leon County Courthouse, eight forty-six AM.
Yes, ma'am.
Alright.
Join us there.
Putting that in the comments, so folks will know, yes. So Anita Faber said, two leaders who will make informed decisions for our future, mentioning our young people is critical. We got Chef Shake on, she said August eighth is her birthday.
Happy birthday, Seth.
Hopefully she'll come on down on the eighth and vote with the Queens for the Queens. Yes, so.
Wish her a crown. Sharon had a crown and I was like, that's kind of cute. Jump off the cliff, we doing something good, we can look cute at the same time.
And your crown to cast your vote? Yes, 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 yes. Alright, so let's tell folks how they can connect with you, um Elaine and your pain and whatever your needs are.
Look, first, elainebryanttlh.com, everything is connected to that, whether it's Facebook, Twitter, email, you name it. You only have to remember one thing, elainebryanttlh, uh, and you can get to me. Uh, always, well, volunteers, uh, we're getting down, obviously, to the last, uh, three weeks before, uh, the election is here. And, um, I, I really want everyone that's in the listening audience to actually come and help make me, uh, help make us, help make this community uh, exactly what it is we want it to be by casting your vote for me, to continue to sit in the seat that will make a difference in collaboration with my fellow commissioners. Because this is not a singular task, uh, it's all of us working together, uh, on the commission as well as in our city. So please, volunteer. There is a place you can actually sign up to volunteer. And if you don't want to go on social media, look, just send me an email. I, I'm, I'm accepting. I, I better still, if you know Christine or Talithia or Nicole, let them know. Somebody actually knows me, so actually know and they, they will collect, uh, names and we will reach back out to you. Uh, we want to hear from you, uh, and we want you to, uh, come and help us make this, uh, a reality.
All right, sounds good. Now, again, voting date is August eighteenth, but early voting, I believe, begins August third, if I'm not mistaken.
That's correct.
All right, and, um, if you have any questions around that, uh, leonboats.com.
Yes.
We supervise of elections, office for Leon County. Um, Mark Early is our supervisor of elections. Um, also, you can do, uh, mail ballot, vote by mail. So definitely take advantage of that as well. Um, you know, you want to try to get that in prior to the eighteenth, so give yourself a little time on that. So we want to encourage folks to, um, do that as well.
And on the vote by mail ballot, let me just remind everyone that you'll think that you've completed everything and you put it in the envelope, but you actually have to initial the back of that envelope in order for it to be a legitimate, uh, cast your vote. Please go through all of the instructions, do everything you need to do, but make sure you actually put, put your, uh, name initial on the ballot.
Absolutely. Thank you for making that point. So, um, any voter registration drives going on or, or anything like that? I know that the, um, drive for, or the deadline for the August election was July twentieth, but, um, for folks that want to vote in November, may still register to vote to make the November election.
Yeah, so we have a voters registration drive, um, going on, on Thursday, July thirtieth, in the Greater Bond Neighborhood at Holton Street Apartments from three to six PM. And the, we're gonna keep it going. We're gonna get people registered. We're gonna get those who may already be registered, the mail-in ballot if they want. We're gonna inform them about the Queens, um, voting this Queens Initiative. So we're gonna use this time to tell everybody about all the things that are going on so that those who may not be connected can feel and be connected.
And if anyone has any questions about voting, in particular, any direction, we're at the South City Summer Break Spot every Tuesday and Thursday from eleven to one PM. Again, Commissioner Bryant and a bunch of other folks have been there, just be on, being on hand and encouraging. But if you need or have questions, we're referring back and forth. Um, definitely Brandy, um, who's a notary and has been working with Talithia in the Bond community. Um, we're really trying to be very, very intentionally collaborative in answering questions that citizens and residents have about voting. So, um, anyone that has those questions, we have a stationary spot every Tuesday and Thursday, um, in, uh, South City at the Greater Love Church, you can swing by.
Yeah, thank you for saying that because it's actually the idea to do these ongoing. The first one we did in Bond was Brandy Knight with Be Elite Consultant, I believe that's her business. Um, and she brings out her laptops, her, um, what is it, what do you call them? Hotspots, all of that. So it's, of course, community leaders plugging with community leaders, but it, it was definitely, um, her original idea. And so it's, we're, we're all just keeping it, keeping it going however we can support.
Okay, what's the address for?
Twenty-five oh-two A Holton Street.
Well, that's Holton Street, twenty-five oh-two A Holton Street for the, um, voters registration on Thursday. But the Greater Love, um, what's the address for that?
It's at the church, it's five-two-four Orange Avenue.
Okay, very good. Yeah, Brandy is saying thank you to you all.
You're welcome, Brandy. We love you, Brandy.
All right, we have, uh, fellow city commissioner Curtis Richardson saying, just a reminder that for the first time since reconstruction, that's in the late eighteen hundreds, we have had a majority-minority commission in Tallahassee. That's huge.
That's, that's big.
Yeah.
It's a big deal. And, and you know, Nicole, what it makes me think about is that song that James Brown sang when he said, I don't want nobody to give me nothing, open the door and I get it myself. Listen, if the door can be open, we can get it ourselves. We're in the, we're in the area of, the era of equity. And it's time to have some conversations about how we become equity champions within our own community. And we, you know, fortunately, unfortunately, we need a majority-minority commission to push that agenda. So we're looking forward to working with Elaine and, and the rest of the commissions, not because we're against anyone, but because we are for equity, we're for fairness and justice. And where that can be implemented, we're here for it. So that is a huge opportunity for our community to have a minority-majority commission that gets it and, and that can route us to the proper direction to inform it policy-wise in a way that has lasting impact. So thank y'all so much for y'all's work.
And you know, Christine, when, when you say that and, and people hear us championing and get so excited about a major, uh, minority-majority, um, commission and they feel like it's an exclusionary thing, we all win when equity and justice is actually, right? This whole community wins. And that's the piece that I think we need to understand that the lens of equity and doing things justice work benefits the whole, right? We, we, we can't get into it because we don't have the time. But if you think about our crime rate and our poverty and all of those things are stopping industry from coming into this city. And so it is the commission and the policymakers that are gonna make the policies that are gonna make level the playing fields in our city so that things are equitable and justice is happening across the board. And then we bring industry in, that's what, more jobs for other people, that's business owners, that's contracts, that's contractors. That is education, that is every piece working together. So it is not an exclusionary thing, it is definitely inclusion that we can have somebody that can see the issues and know that if we fix all parts and that all parts are interconnected, we'll be a better Tallahassee altogether.
Yeah, I see what I mean, right? These are leaders, I'm telling you, listen to them.
We've had good teachers.
Very much.
Yes, very good. All right, any closing remarks? I think Christine and Talithia have said their closing remarks, but i- if, if you have anything else you want to say or share.
Yeah, I want, I want to say one other thing, uh, Nicole, because I really want to, uh, thank you and, and your broadcast. Um, not just for the conversation with me, but conversations with many people in our community to, to provide the platform for them to be heard, uh, and to have questions asked, uh, of a listening audience even, that will help to inform. So I, I just wanted to give congrats to you, kudos to you for the job that you're doing in our community to help spread the message.
Well, thank you, I appreciate it.
Tallahassee Oprah.
There you go.
Yes, it's the labor of love. That's what, you know, CWN is all about. We just are preparing to spread it farther and, and wider. And, um, I'm just glad to be used for, you know, to, to get the word out. So, um, thank you for engaging. Thank you for this virtual meet and greet. Uh, I think the viewers have, uh, benefited from it. So, um, please continue to engage with your candidates, get to know who they are, uh, what they stand for. And, um, you know, if their agendas line up with what your concerns are, what your agenda is, be, be informed, be informed, be informed. Um, so I'm gonna bring this to a close, but I, you know, we have given out Elaine's information. Um, elainebryanttlh.com and she is at elainebryanttlh on all social media platforms. So by all means, reach out, connect, stay involved. That's how you can find out where she's going, what, what, what her next meeting is and, uh, what she's doing in the community during this time up to the election. So don't forget about the Queens Initiative on August eighth. Get back up real quick, um, at the Leon County Courthouse at eight forty-six AM. So all the Queens, wear your, wear your crowns and cast your ballot on that.
Yeah.
All right?
Yeah.
All right, very good. Well, we will see y'all next time.
All right, thank you.
All right.